Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Taos County Commission, December 17th, 2024. I'd like to call a meeting to order. And we'll start with the roll call. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Present.
Commissioner Vahil?
Present.
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 We'll move to inspirational devotions. Anyone have any, anything they'd like to relate?
I do, sure.
Go ahead.
The green button.
It's not, it's border. No, it's right.
Yes, sir. We, we had a young gentleman up in the quest area, Josiah Aldonado. Unexpectedly, he passed away. I'd like to just acknowledge the young gentleman.
Thank you, Commissioner Romero. We'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of Minnesota as the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the agenda. I understand we have some changes.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Brush.
I would like to make a motion to move item 17, which is our executive session, to after item 10 presentations, and also to remove from this agenda item 17F regarding our county manager's performance evaluation to give us some more time to prepare for that conversation. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the agenda as presented.
I will make a second. I can't turn on my mic.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brush, seconded by Commissioner Vahil, to amend the agenda. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vahil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And we move then to awards and recognitions. Presentation of Taos County Dispatch yearly awards, Roberto Saragosa. Please come forward.
Thank you, Chair Romero. Commissioners, good morning. Roberto Saragosa, E911 Director for Taos Central Dispatch. As we come to the end of the year, I felt it was important to recognize some individuals for the hard work they've done this year, but I also feel the need to, and these aren't going to be individual awards, but I also feel the need to recognize them as a group. It's a good chance to recognize them for what they've done all year long, been up there in, through tough times and holidays and nights and you name it. So I really applaud what they do and I'm very appreciative. I'm a lucky director. They, like I, like I've said before, I would take my, my team with, against anybody in the state dispatch. So I'm, I'm very lucky, like I said. Also want to recognize support staff, which would be those that don't work the console, like Eliza Spinosa, she's my communications supervisor, and Nina Breyu, who tremendously make my life easier throughout the year on the non-console side. They, they really do a terrific job of assisting me and so I wanted to give them a quick recognition. The, these awards, I, I felt were important because again, I don't, I don't believe that dispatch as a state, statewide or nationwide get enough recognition as we, as we enter into this, trying to become first responders. I think it's important to highlight the things that, that, that we do up there because it is important and it is, it is critical to our community. So having said that, I thought of a few awards I wanted to give out this year and to appreciate some of the individuals that, that, that have done extraordinary this year. The first one I want to give out is the Most Improved Telecommunicator Award. What I'll say about that is, well, let me, let me do this. I'm going to give the Taos County Most Improved Telecommunicator Award to Renee Maestas. Can have her come up here. So a little bit about Renee, and this is no slight on her, it's that one of my favorite things as a director in, in experiencing things as a director is progression. When I get to see somebody improve from what were they, were to a time now, and I think Renee like symbolizes that. From, from when I saw her at the beginning of the year, and then it's not, don't get me wrong, it's not that she was a bad dispatcher. She was, she was good, she was learning, she was asking a lot of questions. But fast forward to right now, she's confident, in control, knows what she's doing and, and you know, not afraid to make decisions, makes decisions because she knows what's, what she's doing and she knows that they're right. And it's, it's really, it's really nice to see, again, like I said, progression. So I wanted to applaud her for that and I think that's a really neat thing to see how far she's, she's come in her career. The next award I want to give out, and pardon my mistake, okay, it's going to be, I named it the Got Your Back Award, which is essentially a teammate award. Team is very important to me and it's very important to us up there. I think that's the only way that we can survive sometimes, we're all we got sometimes, you know, and we have to be, we have to be there for each other. And so we try to push that camaraderie and that, that sense of teamwork. And I think, I feel it's important to recognize somebody that, that, that exhibits that. So the Taos County Central Dispatch Got Your Back Award, I wanted to present to Jose Montregón. A few, hold on, Jose. A few quick words about Jose. Jose, we were lucky to get Jose, but it's been over a year, but he's not an inexperienced dispatcher. He comes with a lot of experience and it's been invaluable to us. And, and he came over and you could see just his attitude and his, his personality in every shift he works, he brings the team up, he makes some of those situations a little bit easier to deal with because of his, you know, his, his constant helping of teammates and, and bringing them up. We've had some very young dispatchers this year and he has been willing to, to do a role that he's not exactly quite expected to do, but he's taking, he's taking some of the young dispatchers and he's, he's showing them through all the experience that he's gone through the right way. And he doesn't necessarily have to do that, but he's trying to make us a better team. And so everything he does is appreciated and we're lucky to have him back with Taos Central Dispatch. So, thank you, Jose. The last one I want to give out is called the Taos County E911 Directors Award. And that's just kind of an overall dispatch award. I came up with five characteristics that I thought were, were important for us as a, as an organization, as an agency to, to exhibit, and I hope that each one of them tries to, strives to exhibit that in, in their career and throughout the year. And I'll just go through those characteristics really quickly. The first one is performance, you know, from our CAD skills, the radio, making decisions, our priorities, call taking. There's a lot going on that they have to do performance-wise and so that's obviously a big, a big role. Second one is teamwork. We've talked about teamwork, it's important that in there, that's sometimes the only way that we can get through is by being there for each other and that, and seeing them back each other up is, is amazing and it's awesome. The third one is service, it's just a critical one. Service to our callers, which is the community, and service to the agencies that we serve, right? So we have to, across the board, provide that service. The fourth one is dependability, your work ethic, timeliness, attendance and product of work. And so we strive to do, to do all of those things. And the last one is mission focused, having that public safety commitment to the community and always worried about, you know, community, what's best for the community at, at that time. And each one of them reposed with those questions every time they get a call, what's best for our community. I have to make that split decision and they make those decisions. So those five characteristics are kind of gauged, you know, who, who I thought exemplified those the most in all categories from top to bottom. And I want to give the 911 Directors Award to Cassidy Wilson. Real quick, I'll, I'll mention a couple of things about Cassidy. Cassidy's, I, I mean, for, she's an excellent dispatcher. I mean, that she's one of those that, you know, you, she sits at the console and you really don't have to worry because you know, everything's, you know, for the most part can go according to plan because she's, she's, she's excellent at what she does. And, and again, performance-wise, team-wise, service. I've, I've heard, you know, some of the calls and I'm in my office and I hear just her ability to be caring to the, the community, being compassionate, and that's, that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to instill here at, you know, Taos County. Sometimes I hear, like I said, that call and she's, she's on the call and, and I'm like, wow, I don't even, you know, I don't think, she went above and beyond on that, you know what I mean? And that, and that's good and that's what we want. And so she takes extra time, she just, she's not rushing them off of calls. And so those are the, the kind of things that, that we're looking for. And mission focused, again, she's, she's amazing at always keeping that community in mind and public safety. She knows, she knows the mission that we're trying to accomplish and she's, she's all about making sure that her agencies get home safe and that the community's well taken care of. So I appreciate it and I'm thankful for the work she's done this year. Thank you, Cassidy. So that's the awards I have and I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to, to be here. And I hope that they, they all strive for next year's awards and, and yeah, I look forward to being here next year to give some, give some more. So I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto, and congratulations to all the award recipients. And we move to, we move to the public comments. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak to the public, the commissions? You have three minutes. It's a member of the public wishing to speak, so limit their comments to three minutes. No one? Okay, thank you, we'll move on.
There's someone there.
Oh, come on, come on, come on up, Steve.
My name is Steve Stevens Hall. A week ago Monday, the town of Taos held a workshop and at that workshop, the county economic director spoke of, and with respect to film and the filming industry, quote, that they were good, reliable jobs. We need to define good and reliable. What does good mean? Does good mean good pay job, good retirement? There are all kinds of questions. Reliable, what does reliable mean? Reliable to me means that you can stay here and work here day in and day out, that you don't go six weeks someplace else, that you don't go six weeks without work. So I think we need to define more carefully what we mean by good, reliable jobs when we promote an industry like the film industry. It was also said by the mayor at the workshop that the town and the county were the only entities in the state that were jointly pursuing a, a main street project, that the county was also invested in it. And maybe, or at least I believe that's the case, and I know that they are, both the town and the county are participating in a business resource information center. What I'd like to see the town and the county participate in is the construction of a union hall. That's what this county needs, that's what this town needs, that's what this region needs, is a union hall, a place where the people who belong to unions can come and talk about what concerns them. I don't know how many people in this room belong to a union, but I know that the county has a union, the town has a union, the hospital has a union, the large grocery stores have unions. That's what we need. If we're going to change our nation, if we're going to change our, the emphasis in our nation from markets to people, we need a union hall. President Lincoln said that capital was far the superior of business, and I'm going to use another term, capital, I'm sorry, that's backwards, that labor is far, is far the superior of capital. I think we need to understand that, we need to incorporate that understanding in the manner in which we conduct ourselves, in the manner in which we govern ourselves. I think it's terribly important. Regards housing, New Mexico statutes allow for both the county and the town municipal authorities to form housing authorities to take control over housing. I noticed that there's something later on in the agenda about hiring a new, or hiring a housing consultant, is that I'd like somebody to speak to that and talk about, is that moxie? Really, the feedback is terrible. Is that moxie? Are you rehabbing with moxie? Is this a new person, group? Who is it?
Anyone else that would like to speak to the commission at this time? Thank you, we'll move then to the minutes, approval of the December 3rd, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Commissioners, do we have any changes or do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, oh, did you have a change?
No, just any questions.
Okay, I'm just going to move to approve the minutes of our December 3rd, 2024 regular meeting with thanks to our clerk and her office because the way you captured the manager's report and the construction report was really helpful. Thank you.
Wish my Commissioner Brush. Seconded by Commissioner Vahil. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vahil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And next on the agenda, we have presentations. We have presentation regarding update to the Taos County Commission regarding the initiatives underway by the Pinasco Valley Historical Society, Mr. Jose Lopez.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right? He's on. Okay, is it better with the micro on? Right there? Yeah, thank you. Okay. Good morning. Thank you guys for having me and thank you to Brent for getting me on the agenda today. My name is Jose Lopez, I'm the Executive Director for the Pinasco Valley Historical Preservation Society. Some of you may remember me, I would think I was here about two years ago, talking to you guys about the farmer's market in Pinasco, which you guys helped me get started. So really thank you for that. It's been amazing since, since it originally started and, and there's been a lot of good stuff that's come out of that. I'm here for a couple of reasons. I wanted to talk to you guys about who PVHPS is and the work that we are currently doing and the work that we intend to do in the Pinasco Valley. And then I also want to talk about some upcoming funding opportunities that we are looking at, that we are hoping to have Taos County support on. But before I get to that part, I, I do want to just give you guys a little bit of a rundown of who we are, just so that you guys are aware, because I think it's, it's good information for me to share with you guys. So yeah, to start, I guess I'll give a little bit of background. So PVHPS is a registered 501(c)(3). We formed in 2021 and shortly after our formation, we purchased a beautiful building, the old Pinasco High School, or as a lot of people locally call it, La Parochial. And maybe you guys are familiar with it. After purchasing it from the Archdiocese, we got it listed on the National Register for Historic Landmarks and our primary mission at PVHPS is to rehabilitate that building and turn it into a community use space. And we want to serve our community through that space in kind of three different areas and those are cultural preservation, economic development and community service. I guess to give a little bit of history of the building, because I think it's worth talking about a little bit, it was built in 1931, built by the community and the parish and a group of sisters from Grand Rapids, Michigan, the Dominican Sisters, who were invited out to Pinasco by the father at the time, Father Cooper. And he sent them a letter and invited them out with the intention of building the school and having them teach at the school. And it's an important building because it was one of the first public schools in the valley and so many people in the valley have a connection to it one way or another, whether they attended it or taught there or had parents who attended it or taught there. My, my dad went there and my grandparents were teachers there. And beyond that, after the, what are now the Pinasco Public Schools were built, they had an old army barracks building on the grounds and they called it the hot lunch and it was a cafeteria and students from the public schools for a time would walk over there and they'd get their free lunches over there. So, and, and religious education classes were held there. So it's a building with a lot of history and a lot of connections to the community and, and one that a lot of members of the community really want to see saved because of their connections to it. That being said, I think it's also worth saying that, you know, not everything, not all of the memories and the history there is positive. You know, there's a lot of stories of really horrible, you know, corporal punishment that happened there. So part of our mission at PVHPS is to honor and be honest about, you know, both the good and the bad that happened there. So it served as a school and later became a private parochial school until 1987. And at that point, the attendance was dwindling and so it was abandoned basically until today. But you know, that being considered, it's, it's still in good shape. So fast forward back to day, to today, we have purchased the building and, and that's what I want to talk about is, is some of the work that we want to do with the building and some of the work that we're already doing as an organization. So once it's rehabilitated, there's a lot of things that we want to do. One of them, one of the main ones is it will be a community museum so that we'll have a physical repository of items. I've had so many people in the community come to me and be like, hey, I've got like these really old tools that I, I don't want to see, you know, get lost or destroyed. What, what can I do with them? Will you guys take them? And that's absolutely one of the things that we want to do because there's so much history and, and stories attached with these old items. One is an old wagon, a hay wagon that they used to, a horse drawn hay wagon that they would harvest hay with and then somebody has wanted to donate it that. So a physical repository of items. We'll also have a digital archive of historical artifacts and, and documents, which we've already started building out and you can access that on our website, pvhps.org. But we also want to have a space, once we have the building, where people can come and scan any documents that they have and audio and visual equipment so that people can come and record oral histories and, and have that stuff be preserved through our digital archives. Beyond the museum, it's also just going to be a community use space that will be flexible for whatever the needs of the community are. So people can rent it for events like weddings or graduation parties. I mean, it's a, it's a really beautiful building for that type of thing. But beyond that, you know, community meetings, Aseca meetings, mutual domestic meetings, you know, we've talked about having parenting classes there, CTE type classes, really whatever, whatever would serve the community. And then another piece of the intended programming is we would like to build a commercial kitchen on the grounds and that's a little bit further down the line. Our rehabilitation is our number one priority, but, but once we get there, we want to build a commercial kitchen and we'll call it the hot lunch in honor of the, the original lunch building that was there. And that will be a space that members of the community can rent out. And the idea behind it is, you know, we have so many people in the community who are amazing producers of, you know, foods and goods and value-added goods, but you know, with, with some of the restrictions on them, they can't necessarily sell them commercially without access to a commercial kitchen. And there are some, you know, in Taos County has one, or Taos, the town of Taos has one, but you know, I, I, from what I understand, it, it is kind of at capacity a lot of times and, and I think we could really benefit from having one there in Pinasco. So, so those are kind of the, three of the main things that we would like to do, once we have the building rehabilitated. But there's a lot of work that we're doing currently with the resources and the capacity that we have. You know, we, we looked at everything that we wanted to do and, and we said, you know, yes, we want to restore this building, but you know, we don't want that to, we don't want our work to start there, we want to start doing what we can right now. And so we've done what we could and so that includes things like the farmer's market. Again, thank you. But we've also had a lot of community events. Last summer, we held the community cleanup, we weren't able to do it again this summer, but that's something we plan on continuing. We also do the annual yard sales, which is a big event. Everybody, you know, has a yard sale in the, in the valley who wants to and, and it brings a lot of people in. The annual light parade, if you guys have heard about that, we have ours coming up this coming Sunday, I think it's the 22nd. And so we've worked with Laura Lee Martinez, who's a, a community organizer and with the schools to, to make that happen and it's going to be a parade and, and different food vendors and we're doing free haircuts for students, I think, for several hours from like nine to one and free gifts and, and meals for the community. And then maybe you guys heard about the car show that we did this summer also with Laura Lee and the schools. We acted as the fiscal sponsor for, for that event as well and haircuts and we raised a lot of money for the schools. So, you know, trying to, that's that community service piece, we're, we're trying to do those types of things wherever we can. We've also been able to start some of the work under the cultural preservation umbrella so that, like I said, we've started our digital archives. We also have a program, it's called Platicas and it's a heritage language program. We were really active with it this summer. And basically what it is, is we invite anyone from the community out and we have, we'll pick like a query, one of them that we chose was Remedios. We had another one on, on music and dances and have people come out and we encourage them to speak in Spanish and you know, if possible, the Spanish that is unique to northern New Mexico. And so that program is really an effort to keep that, that language alive and we've had a lot of the older folks come out and, and we're working to bring some of the youth out to, to keep it alive and, and recording those, those conversations also because there's some really awesome stories that come out, have come out of that. And so workshops is another thing that we're doing. We had an Adobe workshop this summer and it's the first of many workshops. and it's the first of many workshops that we want to do. We probably had close to 40 people come out, and they made 320 adobes. I think we had ages ranging from two years old to 90 years old. So that was really special. And the other cool thing about that is those adobes that we made are going to be used directly in the rehabilitation of the building. So it also benefited our, you know, primary goal. Yeah, so that's just to give you guys kind of an idea of the work that we are currently doing. But there's a lot more that we want to do. And, you know, some of that can't happen until we have this physical space, until our building is rehabilitated. So I'll talk a little bit about where we're at in that process. You know, there's kind of the two steps to it. There's the planning phase, which is, you know, developing all the architectural documents, that sort of thing, and then the construction phase. So we're still in the first stage. We have six phases for the architectural stage. And so we have completed the first two. Those are paid for and complete. We worked with an architecture firm out of Albuquerque so that the result of that is having a plan for all of the programming once the building is restored. And we also have an assessment report looking at the conditions of the building and, you know, sort of describing what the priorities are and, you know, what the portions of the building that need the most love are. And we have that on our website. If anybody's interested at looking at it, it's really interesting. The next two phases are more technical, you know, developing schematics for the building. We, with the help of Taos County, have secured funding for those next two phases. We received the Destination Forward Grant with Taos County as our fiscal agent. So we have money to pay for those next two. And then the last two, which is development of construction documents and development of landscaping plans are... We don't have any grant funding for those two phases, but you know, we have money that we've raised through fundraising and private donations that we have that could cover that if we aren't able to get grant funding for that. So we are hoping to start breaking ground, ideally, you know, maybe fall of 2025, if all of these pieces come together. We have, I think especially in the last year, but you know, throughout the whole project, we've had a lot of success raising money. I think at our last meeting, we looked at everything that we've raised, and we've raised, I believe, around $890,000 since our formation in 2021. And that's through a combination of things. We've had so many individuals in the community or individuals who have left the community make donations. We had our fundraiser gala in 2023. We've got another one coming up in 2025, April 26th. If you guys are interested, it'll be at Buffalo Thunder. Yeah, I hope to see you guys there. It's going to be a good time, and I'll, no, excuse me. The Blue Ventures are playing, we had Hurricane last time. And then donations from private foundations. And then just in the last year, we've started to receive some grant funding, and that $100,000 with you guys is part of that. So you know, we need to continue raising money, and so that's what we're looking at. From the assessment report that I mentioned that we developed with the architects, they are estimating 1.5 million to see the building completely rehabilitated. And that feels very doable to us. But now I'll jump into the funding. So thank you guys all for bearing with me through all of that. So there's really kind of one big funding opportunity that we are looking at that we are hoping that we can get Taos County support on it. And that is a subsequent round of funding from this Destination Forward Grant that I talked about. So after completing the initial $100,000 phase, we will then be eligible for $500,000, and that money can be used to go towards construction. And that's a big deal for us because, you know, that's a third of our construction costs. So you know, I've had some conversations with some people, and I understand that with regards to fiscal agency in Taos County, you know, there's issues with capacity right now. And I just want to say that I totally understand that that's where we're at. And you know, that's something to be dealt with or to, you know, just be aware of. And I guess I just want to say, you know, we're not there yet. But when this comes up, you know, we as a 501(c)(3) have done a lot to get ourselves to be in a place where we can handle larger sums of money. We are contracted with a CPA firm. And so I don't know exactly what it will look like, but you know, when we get there and we start talking about this additional pool of money, I just want to say that PVHPS is willing to do whatever we can, pull from our own resources to relieve any burdens of, you know, accounting or record-keeping if we're able to move forward with that grant. So you know, it would really move our project along immensely. And we are willing to do, you know, whatever we can on our end to make it happen. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of that because it's coming up in 2025. And, you know, I'm hoping to get your guys' support on it. So I hope we can continue that conversation. Another piece of that is, you know, we've talked to representatives about, you know, ICIP funding, and that's other funding that we don't have access to because we're not a political subdivision. So yeah, I guess I just wanted to give you guys an idea of who we are and things that are coming up and the work that we would like to do and work with you guys on. So with that, thank you for your time. Thank you for hearing me. If you have any questions for me, all of my information is on pvhps.org. And I'm usually always available, so. And I hope to see you guys at the gala. So thank you.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Hill does have a question or comment.
Actually, I just, I have a comment. I was saying, thank you for coming forward. I didn't realize all that was taking place there. It's really exciting. And I've heard a lot of good things about the farmer's market. I've just never been able to make it up there at that time. But just keep us posted. Certainly, it's great information. I love what you're doing. And I think you set the website, again, can you give it to me?
Yes, it's p v h p s dot org.
Okay, great. So thank you very much. It's really exciting.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I guess not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good luck on your project.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, I think we've made the change on the agenda to go into executive session. So I guess the question is for clarification for the public manager. Are we dealing with the remainder of the items in executive session?
Yes, through all right, executive session, everything.
Okay, so executive session would be for items on the agenda from A to E. And so do we have a motion to go?
Motion to go to executive session, Chair?
Chair, did you say it's through?
E.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hill. Second by Commissioner Miguel Romero. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes, and the time is 9:33. So we'll be back. It's a lengthy agenda in the executive session.
Brent's not here.
Where's Brent? We're missing Brent. Okay, we're back. We've been in executive session. We need a motion to come back in open session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Mascherini, yes. Second by Commissioner Miguel Romero to come out of executive session. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brash?
Yes.
Vice President Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes, and we need a report from the attorney out of executive session. Mr. Hill.
New my. Yep. Okay, sorry about that. I'll start over. I said only, only those matters that were discussed in the motion to go into closed session were discussed during closed session, and no final decisions were made. I will point out, though, that one of them was an update regarding the Tarleton Ranch appeal. I'm gonna sit on my hands. I said, the last part I said was that with regard to the update on the Tarleton Ranch appeal, that appeal was dismissed yesterday, so that is no longer an active case. The rest of those matters that were discussed, there were no final decisions made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Is there a motion to accept the attorney's report out of executive session?
Mr. Chair, move to accept the attorney's report out of executive session.
We have motion by Commissioner Brash.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bahill. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Bahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brash?
Yes.
Vice President Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is resolutions and ordinances. A is discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2024-54, a resolution approving participation in transportation project fund program by New Mexico Department of Transportation, Blueberry Hill Road. Mr. Silva.
Good morning, Chair. First person. I'll be speaking on behalf of Joe Fernandes. He's out ill today. So this resolution is an acceptance of part of our Phase Two of Blueberry Hill. So this funding mechanism is coming from the Transportation Project Fund, and the resolution is just showing that we're accepting the grant agreement and how we're going to be facilitating the money and what phase of the project. So, you know, this Transportation Project Fund will be, will have an allotment of $3,199,808.4. So then we'll have a 5% match. That will be, because the total grant agreement was 3.4 million. But I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Silva. Appreciate it. Glad to see this coming through. Can you just clarify for us, Phase Two, does that get us all the way to the bottom of Blueberry Hill?
No, no, that's going to be Phase Three, and that's going to be another component of what we'll be speaking about later in the meeting of another grant agreement that will be received from Mexico DOT and managing our funds.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Motion by Commissioner Bahill, second by Commissioner Romero for approval. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Bahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brash?
Yes.
Vice President Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And we move to B, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2024-55, a resolution correcting Appendix One of Ordinance 2020-6, adopted by Resolution Number 2024-51. Who is doing this one? Is it, okay, come forward.
Good morning, Chair Romero and Commissioners. So on this resolution, we're just needing to do a correction. It's going to be on Section 2-D. For the disability accounts, we need to adjust the amount that was originally for 160, 150, but unfortunately, that does not break down into four equal installments. So we're going to drop it down to 161, and that will break down to the $40.25.
Okay, so that's just a change.
Yeah, just a change, just a correction.
With that being said, I will make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Bahill, second by Commissioner Mascherini to approve without one correction. Any further discussion, questions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Bahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brash?
Yes.
Vice President Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you. Move to C, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of Resolution Number 2024-56, a resolution establishing salaries for newly elected or reelected county officials. Mr. Hataumio.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. As you're aware, on the November ballot, there is a constitutional amendment, Number Four, which the electorate of the state of New Mexico affirmed in the positive, which allowed for changes to by the county commission for the salaried positions of the county commission, the county assessor, county clerk, the county sheriff, county treasurer, and the probate judge. And these new salary increases are up to the Board of County Commissions at the beginning of their term. So what we have before you is the resolution setting forth an increase to the salaries of the, of all the elected officials, but those beginning their new terms on January 1st, it will affect them, which is the county treasurer, the county clerk, and two of our county commissioners. Staff recommends approval on this resolution, and staff would also recommend that we do a wage study, a compensation study, for the elected officials to make sure that we are positioning them in the correct salary bracket. And I also recommend that we pay the chief-appointed officials 82% of the salary for the elected official. That'd be for all appointed officials. I stand for any questions.
Commissioner Brash?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Hataumio. I just have a couple of questions. So this is, just to recap what you said, this is the, this is shifting the control over this from Santa Fe, from the legislature, to us for the first time ever, based on what the voters did last month. And the last time, is it correct that the last time the state addressed this salary levels was in 2018 or so?
Chair Romero, Commissioner Brash, yes, that's correct. There's been other, there's been other measures that the legislature has passed, but it's been vetoed by the governor. And so this is the first, that's why the Senator Hataumio and some other legislators worked on this during the last session and put it on to the November ballot.
Okay, so this gives, this gives us up here the control over what we do, whether we want to like keep people, encourage people to be in these positions, to make sure that we're in line with our budget. Can you tell us with, like, I mean, this is happening statewide, right? Like, how is our proposal, are we more or less in line with what other counties are doing, even though I know we're all different? You know, like, some small counties have much bigger budgets, some bigger counties might be doing their own thing. But can you just give us a little bit of insight into how we stack up?
A lot of the other counties are considering the similar thing today. We are higher than some of other counties, and we are right in line with some other counties or just below. So I don't think we have a county that specifically matches us. I think San Juan County comes the closest.
Okay, thank you.
So we're below Santa Fe County and we're above Burnaleo County.
One last question, Mr. Chair, and Brent. And I'm sure that you all wouldn't have put this, this documentation before us without knowing the answer to this question, but can we afford what we're proposing here?
Yes, it was budgeted for this, but we always, always need to keep in mind, as the finance director always tells me, there's a difference between budget and cash, and the cash position would allow us to go forward with this. And we just got to make sure we're watching what we do when it comes to approving salaries and budgets and departmental budgets as well.
Good, thank you. That's it for me.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, so just, so everyone understands, and I want to make sure that I understand accurately as well, is that this amendment, we have a deadline to act by the end of the year, correct? Is that correct?
The amendment, the amendment doesn't require us to act.
Okay, that's.
But if, if, if we wanted to affect those offices taking office on January 1st, we needed to act before the end of the month.
Right.
Or else, if the commission didn't, chose not to act, and I think there's one county that may have chosen not to act, is a smaller county, then the salaries would remain in effect.
Until the next election.
Well, until the next election, until, yes, until the next election, and then that, the commission would then have to come up with that salaries. So if you choose to do nothing here, everybody would stay as is, and then, but nobody gets, the offices that are going to be open on January 1st, 2027, potentially, they could see an increase if this commission voted for a salary increase during those two years.
I think it's just important for people to understand the options that are out there. Also, the other thing that I think is really important is, I know we always look at other counties, but it is, it is really difficult to really kind of match up with another county. If you stop and think about what other counties, for example, I'm going to give you an example, in Santa Fe, each commissioner has a secretary of their own. That doesn't happen here. So there's different things that occur. I think in Burnaleo County, they have two deputies, and I mean, it's all so different, and so hence makes it really difficult to really try to compare. So we really have to look at, you know, what is it that we're required to do here? Because the scope of work for each elected official, whether you're in Burnaleo County or you're in Valencia County, is the same requirement. You are required to do, perform a particular job. And so I say that because I think it's important for people to understand, there's a lot of variables, and so it's really hard to really nail down that, that number. I will also say that it's really hard to give yourself a raise as well. I know Commissioner Brash and I were looking at, at, you know, gosh, this is going to affect us, but the truth of the matter is that we always have to, the way we did the compensation for the employees, which is to take the person out of the, out of the position, and just, you know, just look at the position, what does the position require? And so I think it's important for people to understand that. Those are the things that we have to really, really seriously look at, so that we're not saying, hey, that person deserves, you know, more because of that person's ability or whatever it may be, because it is important that we all know that we have the same scope of work wherever you sit in New Mexico. I'm also grateful that, to the voters at this point. So I guess I'll stop right there and just say.
So is it, and is it the case that the salaries that, as they had been established by the legislature, were basically underpaid, comparing them to other county positions?
I did have a hard time hearing you, because of the feedback, but what I heard you say is prior to this amendment.
Yeah, as the salaries as they currently exist, were they considered to be underpaid at this point, the way they'd been set by the legislature? The current salaries that these elected officials were receiving?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
On that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-56, establishing salaries for new elected/reelected officials beginning their term in January 1st, 2025, and to direct management to pay all appointed deputies 82% of salary established for the elected officials. These salary changes are effective January 1st, 2025, beginning on the pay period beginning on January 4th, for officials beginning their term on January, and for all appointed officials and further directed management to conduct a compensation study for elected officials prior to those officials beginning their term on January 1st, 2027.
Sorry, we have a motion by Commissioner Mascherini for approval, seconded by Commissioner Miguel Romero. Is there further discussion, questions on this? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Bahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brash?
Yes.
Vice President Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes.
And I, I didn't hear you say me, but yes.
So we have, the motion has passed, and we have the five votes. Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda, item 12. We have A through, through D. Any, any item there that we need to discuss further? Any commission would like to pull out?
I think. Yeah, we skipped, Chair.
Okay, we're on the.
So we were right here, so now we're on.
We're on contracts and, okay. Yeah, okay, consent, consent is coming up, so it's item 12, contracts, agreements, MOUs and bids. A is discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of RFP award 2025-3 for housing consultant services for Taos County, Elsa.
I'll try not to. Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Sorry if I'm a little hoarse, having issues with my voice box. Before you is, is a evaluation committee summary for RFP 2025-03 for housing consultant services. There is a staff recommendation. The Taos County purchasing department received three responses to our published RFP 2025-03 for housing consultant services for the Taos County prior to the deadline of 2:00 PM, Mount Estater type, Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. The offers we responded were, I really have a hard time saying this, Amorak, I think is what it is, Planning Services LLC, Graceful Heights Ministries LLC, and Taos Housing Partners. Based on the review conducted for this RFP, staff recommended an award for RFP 2025-03 Housing Consultant Services for Taos County to Taos Housing Partners, subject to negotiations of a mutually agreeable contract. And I do stand for any questions from the commission at this time.
Commissioner Brash?
Mr. Chair, and thank you so much, Elsa. I appreciate the work on this. Just a point of clarification, are we talking about Taos Housing Partnership?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. But they call themselves Taos Housing Partners. That's how they represent themselves on the packet. I don't know. It's a little weird.
Okay, do we have any other questions for Elsa? Do we have a motion?
Let me look really quick.
Then if.
No, but that's how I typed it because that's how they had their packet presented.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move approval of RFP Award 2025-03 for Housing Consultant Services for Taos County to Taos Housing Partners or Partnership.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Brush.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Vehil. Madam Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Commissioner Mascarenas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes.
Okay, we have, we move on to B, discussion, consideration, decision regarding approval of contract TCC 2424-61, GM Emulsion LLC, Blueberry Hill Improvements. Mr. Silva?
Chair Romero, thank you for allowing me to present on behalf of Mr. Fernandez. This contract is going to be the, to kind of speak towards Commissioner Brush's statement earlier. This is the full project would be completed in full for more of the termination of, I think, Mesa Vista Road to determine to where it's going to be terminated of Mexico 240. So this will be the total contract in full. And this is going to have a total of three different funding mechanisms. It's going to be the Tracera's Project Fund that you approved earlier for the 1.1, 3.1 million. We'll have an additional, three different grant agreements from the SP Cooperative Agreement and of the legislative, I mean, LGRF funding. And then we're going to be utilizing a additional grant agreement that will become, will be coming before you in about maybe part of the consent agenda from Mexico DOT of utilizing the ARPA funds. We'll be leveraging our ARPA funds to complete this much-needed road projects that's going on for 20 years. So through that element of that, that's what this contract encompasses. It's going to be completing this project and putting it in every mirror. So I stand for any questions.
Jason, thank you. I'm excited to see this happening. But since it's going to go all the way to State Road 240, does it change at the bottom? Because I know there was conversation that we wanted to see, or there was some potential discussion about what might be a little bit more safe, safer? Does that make sense?
The transition of the road, the symmetry of the road is going to have a little bit. It's a difficult project on this, coming from the elevation change from the top of Blueberry Hill as it descends down to State Road 240. There is going to be a road profile change, but not as drastic as we would like to see. There is discussions that since we're tying into a New Mexico DOT road, I'm hoping that we could have some sort of discussion that that would change with maybe adding some curves and some turning lanes. But according to the project that was designed, we're just, we're going to be tying into the road. But the symmetry will change a little bit that would decrease the elevation with the speed would be decreased slightly. But there's some, there's some additional, I feel additional work that may need to happen when the resurfacing of State Road 240, which is a state highway, it would probably encompass at that time.
Right. And just Commissioners, the reason why I say this is because what typically happens is when, in the winter, when there's snow, people would come down and they actually, it's really hard for them to stop. And they go right into that one fence. I think they finally took the fence down and they just go right into the field. But it might be safer, I'm not sure. So thank you. I'm hoping that we'll see some sort of a, little bit of a change. Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Brush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you. And I'll just echo Commissioner Vehil's point because that is, as you pointed out, Jason, like a really tricky, like probably if anyone had a choice, they wouldn't engineer the route that way. But each winter, if we do get snow and ice again, like people slide right straight through 240. So if there is anything we can do, and I'm glad that your eyes are on it, and we're doing what's in our control, but if there's anything we do in cooperation with the state to address that intersection and make it more safe, I know the folks, especially, you know, the folks who've been in accidents or the folks who have fences at the bottom there would appreciate it a lot. There's some not, some kind of bad accidents each winter. But.
Agreed.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve? I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Vehil, seconded by Commissioner Brush. And this is for the 2024-61. Madam Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Commissioner Mascarenas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes.
Thank you. We move to C, which is discussion, consideration, decision regarding granting authority for the county manager to sign the final contract, TCC 2024-60 for Taos Housing Partners for Housing Consulting Services. Mr. Hameo?
Yes, thank you, Chair Romero, members of the commission. Before you, we're asking to give me the final contract. And your packet is the sample contract. We need to assign this contract before the end of the year so we could encumber the funds to meet the ARPA deadline. So we need to, as you know, we awarded the contract, the RFP, a little bit earlier. We've not sat down with the potential, the warty. And so we need to sit down with them and go over the contract terms with them. And so we're asking for that authority to sign the final contract. And then we'll plug in the final figure on the monies available for housing.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hameo or Elsa?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion granting authority for the county manager to sign the final contract, TCC 2024-60 for Taos Housing Partners for Housing Consulting Services.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mascarenas and seconded by Commissioner Romero, Miguel Romero. Madam Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Commissioner Mascarenas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes.
Thank you. And we move now to, to, okay, that would be D, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of contract, TCC 2024-48A1, Alliance for California Traditional Arts, Jessica Sterns.
Good morning, Chair Romero, Commissioners. Before you is an amendment to this contract. We recently awarded an RFP to the Alliance for California Traditional Arts to act as our research consultant for our Economic Recovery Core project, which is to conduct a cultural and outdoor asset mapping study between what started in February of this year through July of 2026. The expanded scope of services includes acting as a fiscal agent to distribute stipends for advisory group members who are representing the county all across the county. We appreciate their service and are valuing their time and expertise through these stipends, which are all funded through private grants that we have raised. The other portion of this is to act as a fiscal agent to sub-award American Rescue Plan funds to continue this contract through July of 2026, in terms of providing the research consultancy and business and economic development planning services, and working with EDAC, the Earth Data and Sciences, Earth Data Analysis Center through UNM, which will be providing the services to create our ArcGIS map as a result of this study. So that is what's included in this contract amendment.
Any questions for Jessica?
Now, Ms. Chair, I move approval of contract, TCC 2048-48A1 with the Alliance for California Traditional Arts.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brush, seconded by Commissioner Vehil for approval. Madam Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Commissioner Mascarenas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Motion has been approved. Thank you, Jessica. And now we move to Department
Matters, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of a change order for additional scope and time for the historic courthouse renovations based on additional funding from multiple sources. Mr. Richard Sanchez?
Chairman Commissioners, excuse me a little bit. I'm having a construction meeting for the detox center going on in my ear also. I'm here to ask permission, to ask you to sign the change order for $7 million with the list of the different funding sources. We do have a schedule of values tentatively developed, and the whole goal is to be as complete as possible, make the building as functional as possible at the end of the $7 million. As you've seen at our, at the last meeting that you attended, there's considerable structural damage to the facility that was hidden due to maintenance issues. And so as we move forward, there may be more. So it's, I think the seven's going to be enough. I hope it's going to be enough. If we don't have any more really major hidden issues, it should be enough to make it a functional building. But it is an old building. When it was a rental, it didn't have maintenance. At when we got it back, it needed some maintenance. We didn't take care of it. And now we're paying for it. But we do have a good plan. We have complete drawings. We have scope of work. And like I said, we're just fine tuning it. There's some of the funding sources are dedicated specifically for the murals and protection and whatnot, and tourism and interactive things. So it's all there. It's going to be close, but so we would like to have it, this change order signed so we can start with the hard work. Any questions?
Motion to approve the change order for additional scope. Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Vehil for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mascarenas. Questions, discussion. Madam Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Commissioner Mascarenas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you, Richard. Thank you all.
Now we move to Department Matters, discussion, considera, oh no, we just did that one. Hard to keep up. Move to the consent agenda. Anything there we need further discussion on? It's items A through, A through N?
Chair, seeing no, no discussion, I would just say, let's go ahead. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Vehil, seconded by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Commissioner Mascarenas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay, that was quick. Now, county managers report to matters. Mr. Hameo?
Thank you, Chair Romero. Start off with, last week was the deadline for members of the Planning Commission to, those interested wanting to apply for the Planning Commission to do so, we received the letters of interest. We are lacking one letter of interest for the Board of Adjustment. Ms. Romero would ask that anybody that wants to be part of the Board of Adjustment to send a letter of interest to her or give her a call. It's after the deadline, but we're still lacking one seat. What we've done in the past is we've used a member of the Planning Commission at times to fill in for the Board of Adjustment. This Thursday, the Planning Department is also meeting with our consultants, architecture research consultants, to begin discussion on the land use, land use and subdivision regulations. And those interested contractors, engineers and architects are welcome to attend that meeting. We're still planning the public meeting at Berry's. We need to firm up a date with that as well. I was looking at the last Tuesday in January, run that past Ms. Romero, but that's what I was looking at. We covered it the last time, but our audit report has been turned in on time. We're just finishing up, making sure all the ARPA funds are obligated and working hard to secure, to secure that contract that we did with GM Emotions, tie up all the money for Blueberry Hill Road that we can so that come the spring, we can finish off that road. We also had a bid opening for Leo Valencia Road, and that work will be done in the springtime as well. We have a June 30th deadline to spend those funds with, with the state of New Mexico. And so at the next commission meeting, we'll award the contract. We do have to do a budget adjustment because it did come in over, over the engineer's estimates. We are going to still award, we're just going to need to do a budget adjustment for that as well. The community schools director position did close. We received two applicants on December 13th. We haven't reviewed those yet. I'm just, I know there's four commissioners and myself that will be attending the New Mexico Water Policy Summit tomorrow from 8:00 to 3:30. Any commissioner that wants to drive down with me is welcome to drive down with me as well. And again, March 10th is the task candidate, the legislature. And I have one thing that just escaped my mind. And just any, oh, any changes that you may have for, we'll send it out, like we always do, at the first meeting of, in January, we'll also approve the Open Meetings Act. We're going to approve the different boards and commissions that you all sit on. And then our rules and procedures for how we conduct meetings. If anybody wants to make any changes, we'll send those out and ahead of time. So let us know if there needs to be any changes. And Christopher Madrid did submit our capital outlay requests. I have copies for you, but I think it stayed upstairs. So we did submit, based on our ICIP plan, for Tom Holder Road, $550,000 to acquire property and perform environmental design and construct a bridge in Rogers, the Taos. We sent this request to Senator Gonzalez and Representative Ortiz. Task County Sheriff, complex construction, $1,020,000 to plan, design, construct a parking lot with a solar canopy, EV charging stations and battery backup for the sheriff's office admin building in Taos County. This request is going to the governor, Senator Gonzalez and Representative Ortiz. Task County Workforce Housing, we're requesting $750,000 to purchase, plan, design, construct workforce housing project in Taos County. It's going to the governor, Senator Gonzalez, Representative Ortiz. Task County ambulance purchase, $275,000 to purchase and equip a new ambulance for the Task County Fire and Rescue Department. And this is going to Senator Gonzalez, Senator Campos, Representative Ortiz, Representative Herrera, Representative Sanchez. Task County patrol vehicles, $250,000 to purchase and equip patrol vehicles for the Task County Sheriff's Office. This is going to Senator Gonzalez, Senator Campos, Representative Ortiz, Representative Herrera, Representative Sanchez. $750,000 to plan, design and construct a culvert in Venteta Road. This is going to Senator Campos and Representative Ortiz. Task County Public Safety Vehicle Purchase, $30,000 to purchase and equip a rescue vehicle for the Task County Sheriff's Office. This is going to Senator Gonzalez, Senator Campos, Representative Ortiz, Representative Herrera and Representative Sanchez. Bridge designed to plan, to plan, design, construct a new replacement bridge for Pilat Bridge, number 8656. This is going to the governor, Senator Gonzalez and Representative Ortiz. And Task County Court Complex Improvement, $650,000. Request to resurface, improve the parking lots within Taos County and Eighth Judicial Courts Complex in Taos County. Going to the governor, Senator Gonzalez and Representative Ortiz as well. And with another set of monies, we are going to put some EV chargings. And with another set of monies, we are going to put some EV charging stations out in the front parking lot. This should be done in the May timeframe. We try to get it done before and the resurfacing crack sealing before the farmer's market opens up. But we are working on getting that done as well as installing a charging station at Royals Echo Community Center. So I stand for any questions.
Question for the manager. Covered a lot of ground there.
On the, I have a question.
Go ahead.
On the EV at the community center, is that is are we going to be doing that for all community centers? Or what's the rationale that we're doing an EV at one of the centers, community centers?
The rationale on is that that's part of the green corridor monies. So that's where we're trying to stick it along what the Governor's Office perceived as the green corridor.
I see. Okay.
And then, but any, we are looking for other grant monies for EV charging stations. My directive to Mr. Sanchez, who is still in back of me, is anytime that we construct a building or remodel a building, let's account for EV charging stations. As an example, it's not included in the design, but I saw the design for the community center for in Piñasco. So I'm asking them to include that right away. I don't know if we have the proper power in there, but I could tell Mr. Sanchez, at least get the charging stations installed, and then we can work with Kit Carson as far as bringing over the power.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chair, I just I have a follow up question to what you just said, Brent, which is the most recent building codes that we voted on a couple of months ago, what do they say about including electrical infrastructure to account for future electrification of everything? That might be more a question for the planning department, but we approved the latest building codes that we had to do a couple of months back. And do you know, and again, if this is more a question for Rachel Romero and not you, that I get it. I thought that there was some sort of directive in the building codes that says what kind of power you need to have anticipating how we're moving toward electrification. Do you know?
I do not know the answer to that question. I I don't know if Ms. Flores knows the answer to that question either, but she doesn't know the answer either, but we can.
Because I think that that and that might be something that also that Richard would want to take a look at. But I would also imagine that our contractors and architects are familiar with that. But I thought that there was something in there that had certain requirements that would then accommodate for electrification. Maybe you know.
Chair, if I may, so Commissioner Brush, you're I think you're referring to new construction, right? Right. Okay, yes. And you're right. It was in there. Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, that was something that. Right.
Okay, are there any more questions for Mr. Hameo? Okay, if not, we'll move to.
Well, I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Chair, so I know that Richard said he was listening to or he was on a meeting for detox. Are we? Can you give us an update?
Do you have a contract with R and M Construction that's doing the water sprinkler system, installing that? And they're doing some other building improvements in relation to that. Then we're also going to go in and do some painting and and some remodeling. So when they open up, they'll be ready to go.
So that's already happening.
And we're also looking to retitle it as well. And we're actually today, they're in the process of taking out all the old furniture and all that stuff. So the R and M construction can work in there.
That's great. That's that's an improvement. Thank you. Moving forward. Great. Thank you.
Are there any any commissioner announcements? If not.
I guess. Mr. Manager, when is the swearing in? I I think I know the date, but I don't. I've not heard a time or.
We haven't figured out the number.
Okay. Of New Year's Eve, right? I mean, New Year's, December, yeah, New Year's Eve.
Oh, sorry. That's December 31.
Yeah, December 31.
Okay, that's.
Okay.
I guess that would be just the announcement for the public that's forthcoming, so.
Swearing in December 31.
Started working on invitations earlier, I mean, yesterday, I saw her working on them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, okay. Okay.
Yes, in here. So.
I'm going to invite you again. Don't worry.
Okay, I think we've we've completed the executive session. We're ready for adjournment. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Romero. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay.